Welcome to the New Market Zoning Board of Adjustment meeting for Monday, November 6, 2017. I apologize for being late, I had a rundown from Scarborough, Maine. And our first of our business is a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have the minutes of the April 24, 2017, meeting?
It's been so long, I don't remember what they are even, so.
Why don't we table that item and come back to it and move on to our agenda item number three, which is our regular business. We're considering the application of Eric DeWitt. It's a public hearing for an application for a variance from section 32-49 of the New Market zoning ordinance to permit residential use in a B1 zone where residential use is not permitted, and from section 32-233, mixed-use development, paragraph B1, to permit a mix of residential and non-residential units on one lot. The property is located at 81 Exeter Road, tax map U3, Lot 137, in the B1 zone. And hopefully, everybody's had a chance to drive by and get a look at the property and is familiar with it.
Every day, two or three times.
Very good. Our procedure is to have the applicant make whatever -- we've read the written materials. This is your opportunity to tell us whatever else you think we need to know to support your application.
Great.
We'll give you a chance. We'll open the floor for public hearing, and I'm guessing probably close it pretty quick for public hearing, and then we'll ask questions as we go along.
Great, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, do we -- who are our regular members?
I am.
One, two, three, four. So I need an alternate for this evening. Mr. Shelton, I'm going to have you appointed to sit on the application, if you don't mind. Thank you very much. So if you can just step up, introduce yourself, and we're happy to hear what you have to say.
Great, my name's Eric DeWitt, I'm the property owner. I thought I would take you through the existing conditions and the proposal, and then hand it over to Doug to make the legal argument. He's my attorney.
And what's Doug's last name?
McDonald.
Doug McDonald.
Doug McDonald.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, as you can see on the television, this is the existing conditions. Quite a bit of wetland and steep hill as you travel up 108. And then down on the part where there are buildings, there are two houses, a driveway, kind of a stubout, parking space, a garage, a couple sheds, and an existing footbridge. Here, you can see the buildings up close. They -- the one on the right was originally a chicken coop, and the one on the left was an in-law home. They're in need of a little bit of TLC, sort of dated. You can see the back of this is the main house.
They seem to have anticipated a tiny house trend.
Yeah. Two hundred ninety square feet. So, the proposal is to remove all these existing buildings and replace it with a single building on the front lot, and not encroach on the wetlands. So you can see here, oops, here's the driveway parking spaces, single building, and then some other features that are landscaping. This is a view of the building. It is meant to be kind of a New England farmhouse-style barn with a little modern twist, a couple cupolas. The first floor is meant to have one or two small businesses, and the second floor has eight studio-style apartments that are sort of on the same idea of compact eco-living. And the idea is to do this development as sort of a green development with -- to promote local living.
What's the size -- I'm sorry, what's the size of the proposed structure? What's the square footage?
The footprint is forty by seventy, so two thousand eight hundred square feet.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, that's all I have, was sort of for the proposal. As you can see, these are sort of meant to be for a single person, sort of transitional out of college, maybe a young professional, or somebody who wants to live alone but not have the high rent of apartment that is on larger size. So, I guess I can hand it over to Doug unless anybody has questions.
Was -- I'm sorry, was this mixed-use or residential-only?
Mixed-use. So this is the second floor?
Yeah.
And this is the first floor, open floor plan.
And what's your vision for the first floor? I'm just curious to hear it.
One or two small businesses, and they would be within the permitted uses.
Okay. All right, thank you. We may have more questions, but this is as I think of them.
Hi, my name is Doug McDonald again. I'm with Keenan McDonald. I represent the applicant. It's a pretty unique project with a pretty unique lot in town. There is, as you know from looking at it and driving by it, the topography is a bit of a challenge in this area between the slopes and the wetlands. So, really, the buildable envelope that makes sense is where the existing buildings are now. And those buildings are residential now, so at this point in time, they don't conform with the ordinance either. So, it's a forward-looking project with two commercial units, which would be permitted in the zone, and as mentioned when reading the notice, we need some relief for the residential use and the mixed-use. So, when you look at the criteria for the variance, you look at, as you know, public interest and spirit of the ordinance, somewhat looked at together oftentimes after the Harperside Public interest is served in this application or by this application. There'll be the removal of the existing structures, which, again, are aged and could be beautified, certainly, and as you saw in the depiction, the building itself is a very attractive building in keeping kind of a New England format. Another aspect that serves a public interest is eliminating two points of access on Route 108. There is the existing driveway, and then you have a kind of just parking slot, which, as you saw on the depiction of the proposed development, turns into a more typical exit and egress and ingress, as you'd see with the rest of the properties on Exeter Road in that area. Further, the way the building's placed, and the size of the building, and the character of the building, I think fits more with the commercial context of the surrounding buildings. It's a unique lot in that, as you can see to the right on that picture, there's a fair amount of, you know, wooded lot, and across the street, it's similar. There's an auto place up the hill that's kind of hidden, but it's fairly wooded, so you, you know, you come into this lot, and then you transition into the rest of the commercial neighborhood. So, it would serve the public interest. It only has, as the most direct neighbor, a funeral home, which is just off that picture to the left. But the other things around there, as you know, is a car wash, and there's a nerve being, and so there's another building that looks a little bit more residential. It's not across the street and up the street a little bit. So, this is somewhat, as you come out of that wooded area and into the commercial area, this lot's a little bit unique. It's almost like a transitional lot as you move into the more commercially-developed segment there. So, when you look at the Harperside case, you know, does it alter the essential character of that neighborhood? I don't believe that this type of development, the way it would blend in, and the way it would improve, that lot would alter the essential character, and nor would it threaten the public health, safety, or welfare. In fact, it would probably increase at least the safety element with respect to the ingress and egress. As far as the spirit of the ordinance being met, again, there's no commercial there now. It adds commercial. It adds it in a very tasteful way. It blends in commercial development with limited residential, because as you saw from the depiction, those units are fairly small. There's studio-style living that'd be certainly more affordable for a younger group. You're not going to have families necessarily moving into that kind of environment, simply because the size restriction would not allow that. So you're not -- it's not a place where buses are going to be stopped, as far as school buses, or kids are going to be playing around their house. So, even though it's allowing a residential, it's not allowing, you know, the development of single-family homes in that commercial district. You know, when looking at the purpose of the zoning ordinance, you know, this does satisfy some of the purposes that are listed and enumerated in the beginning of the zoning ordinance. Relative to vehicle congestion being alleviated, that's somewhat probably the case with the ingress and egress, and some of the other, the aesthetic qualities, the community developments of a neighborhood. Substantial justice, that element of the test. The loss to the developer would not be outweighed by any gain or perceived gain to the general public. The loss, if the project did not move forward, would be the loss of some of the things I just enumerated. It's a sensible development, it's attractive, it puts commercial space on the lot, and it doesn't burden the services. Again, you'll have single people living in studios, you're not looking to overburden any of the town services that already exist. You'd probably have a better tax benefit as a town from this type of development. And again, the safety element, which is in the purpose of the zoning ordinance, would be served. That also flows into the next prong, which is the values. A well-thought-out project like this certainly is not going to diminish the value of the abutters or the surrounding areas. The development would increase, if anything, those values, just by adding a modern, attractive, and newly-developed space. It also will allow a nice transition into the commercial properties as you enter the town, which would be, I think, more attractive than what's currently there. And with respect to a hardship, going back to the beginning a little bit, this is a tricky area to develop. There have been attempts to look at other commercial developments. They have not been able to move forward because the developers have found that the challenges were not something they can overcome with respect to primarily the wetlands. And the wetlands, keeping those wetlands and making this development serves, and then going back to some other criteria for a moment, serves the town in that --
Can you go back a slide?
This one?
No, keep going.
Sure.
That, what is that we're looking at?
This was a development --
That doesn't appear in any of the drawings that we have.
What's that?
That doesn't appear in what we have, so I'm curious what this is.
This was a development that was proposed, and as you can see, it not only disregards the setbacks to the wetlands, it fills in a considerable amount. They were interested in putting this on, but eventually walked away because of the challenges posed by the wetland.
I asked because I don't remember seeing this. We've been, I've been here for like six years, I don't remember seeing this applica -- was this submitted as an application?
This was more like nine or ten years ago.
Okay.
And who was, who put this together?
Appel Door Engineering.
I just wanted to have some context, so the record reflects what that is, because I've never seen that before.
Sure. And if I could go back a second, so, talking about the difficulties of the wetland, and you can see between Hydrick A and Hydrick B, we're looking at quite an amount of setback, side and front, and what you're left with is this green triangle, which I've had developers, you know, look at it and walk away. Not only Appel Door, I had a dentist look at it and say, "I can't do anything with it." And actually, let me pull up the slide. Earlier this year, I was contacted by Venter Retail Partners. They were looking to do a development in New Market. I actually sent them over the drawings of existing conditions with the wetlands, and this is the email they gave back to me. "Sorry for the delay on my end. Our client had a chance to review, and unfortunately, I do not think we can make anything work with your property due to the wetlands. I want to let you know, but feel free to reach out if you have further questions." So this has sort of been a pattern with the property. People look at it, they see the challenges, they see the wetland, the steep slope, the perennial stream that goes through it, and they just say, "It's not worth our time."
And you've got somebody now that thinks this is worth the effort, or?
Yeah, me. I mean, I already own it, so I don't have to invest the cost of purchasing the property. And I've worked a long time on this to make it work, make it viable between the commercial, the size, the parking requirements, all the other things that go into it. And I think this is it.
This email and the prior application, or the prior conceptual design that you showed us there, I don't know what to call it, but the Apple, let's call it the Appel Door Plan. Is this, have you submitted this as part of the record? Because I don't remember seeing this.
No, I did not.
All right. Well, we're seeing it tonight, so I guess we'll consider this part of the application, because I think it's important.
Yeah.
We have all this in the records, everybody can see what was --
Goes towards hardship.
It goes towards hardship, yeah.
We can certainly, if it's acceptable just to get into the file, send electronic copy to whoever tomorrow morning and ask them to --
Yeah, to Diane Hardy, if that could be emailed to Diane Hardy to enter it into the official record.
Frankly, it's for your benefit.
Right.
So, it's a little bit tough for us to deal with stuff that we see, but we've read it and we've seen it. When we see stuff for the first time on the night, so it's a little bit difficult. But I think it's to your benefit and to our benefit that everybody sees the materials that are the basis of the decision, regardless of what the decision ends up being.
Yeah, that may have been a miscommunication between us. I thought that was part of the package, so we'll certainly supplement it in the morning.
Make sure, just make sure for your benefit that the application packet is complete with all the information you're showing us tonight.
And if you have any other communication from developers that basically says, "Thanks, but no thanks," that would be helpful, too.
Yeah, I can take back.
Right, the email, yeah, all of it that you're showing us tonight. We'll consider it part of the record, because we're looking at it tonight. It's just a little bit difficult for us to react to stuff when we're seeing it for the first time.
I apologize for that.
Okay, so carry on, I'm sorry. Mr. McDonald, go ahead.
Thank you. So, this is all contained in the application, but just on the issue of hardship, we've just heard some more support for the hardship. It's a unique lot, it's physically unique, the wetlands, the topography, the developable So, there's no real fair and substantial relationship that exists between the public purpose of the ordinance and the specific application. We address that in detail in the application, but I think some of the comments that you've just heard and I've just mentioned support that. And the proposed use is a reasonable one. We believe it's a reasonable use, again, for the reasons I stated earlier about bringing commercial, eliminating some of the safety issues. It certainly seems like a reasonable use for this site. If you were to consider this under subpart B, this property, again, has special conditions. We've discussed them. It cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance, which we've discussed with respect to just the dialogue we had on the other proposed developments that never got off the ground because of the challenges of the property and its physical characteristics. So, a variance from strict conformance is needed to allow the property to be used in a reasonable fashion. So, unless there are further questions for me, or general questions for either of us, that would be the conclusion of our presentation.
Thank you. I'm sure there will be.
I'm just curious, would you be the landlord of those eight studio apartments as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Mike, have all the abutters been notified?
Yes.
Have you gotten returns?
Yeah, there were just two.
Those two abutters?
Well, no, no, they were planned more, just two that were not picked up, and actually one is the applicant.
Okay. All right. So what I'm going to do, you guys can please have a seat.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to open the floor for the public hearing part of the presentation, and we'll circle back to our questions. So the floor is now open for public comment. Seeing no public comment or member of the public, the public comment portion of the hearing is now closed, and the floor is open for questions from the board. Go ahead, please, Wayne.
What is the size of the apartment, square footage?
Let me move to that slide.
Are they all the same, or they vary, or?
Let me zoom in for you. So, the majority of them are this size, so the main living area is about fourteen by ten, which I believe conforms with the minimum size requirement, and then the larger one is about double that.
So, a hundred and forty and two eighty, is that right?
No, no, I'm just talking about the main room. So I believe the code is, there has to be one room that's a hundred and twenty square feet. These are more like a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty. Then you can add another thirty-five.
Okay.
I can give you --
No, wait, hold on, then, let me go. What, my real question is, is what is, is there a minimum size?
The applicant's correct. There is a, one room has to be at least a hundred and twenty square feet.
Okay, all right, and that means --
And then, and then you just need sanitary facilities on top of that.
Okay, that's all I was really getting at, okay.
Good. How long have you owned the property, Mr. DeWitt?
So, I grew up in New Market, and the property used to own, it owned by Dennis Wachner, and he was sort of a father figure for me growing up. I inherited it when he died nine years ago, and I've been taking care of it since.
And it's currently rental?
Yes.
What I think, before we get into the meat of this project?
Yes, Richie, thank you.
Back on April 13, 2011, a similar proposal, like it located in the B1 zone, bordering the M2A zone to the north, did not gain approval with the board. This board, I wasn't here, but subsequently, the town instituted spot zone zoning, changing this area to the M2A zone. Why not all the B1 zone was changed? It's a small zone of probably a quarter of a mile.
Yeah.
The railroad tracks to the end, I don't know. And subsequently, they changed the town lot and the next three lots to M2A zone. And I'm saying, why didn't they do the whole thing? And I question that, but I guess, I guess in their thought, they only accommodated one person. So, we're going to take that in advisement here. There's no way that I think this can get developed by a commercial use only.
Can I speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, I wish you would, because I'm not sure --
So, I did go back and read that case. So, the proposal was similar, like you said. The building was substantially larger, almost two hundred feet by seventy feet, so over four times as large as this. His hardship was a blinking light, so I don't think it was a very strong hardship. If you go and read comparatively, I think this really meets the hardship. The wetlands, the, you know, the setbacks, the steep hill and all that.
Yeah, are you talking about the Cheney application, Richie?
Yeah, obviously.
Because that's, I was going to bring that up.
Yeah, you people denied it, I think, three to two on the hardship, if I remember correctly.
We denied it.
And so it failed, but subsequently, at a later date, the town changed that area to an M2A. So that's mixed-use now.
Correct, and that's what this should be.
I say, and the whole zone should have been changed when they accommodated one section of it, but it never did, so now we're at the dilemma of what are we going to do?
Yeah.
Well, that is a dilemma.
Well, is it appropriate for us to be legislating from here?
No.
I mean, it's clear that it --
It's clear what we got a B1 zone.
Correct.
That's what we got to look at.
And if you clear violation of that, it makes perfectly good sense, but the town fathers apparently had their blinders on.
Well, I can't speak to --
That's why he's here, though, right?
Yeah, I can't speak to spot zoning or not-spot zoning, Richie. I can't explain why the zoning is the way it is.
I can't neither, because I wasn't there.
And I'm not sure it's particularly relevant. I think, I think the application has to rise and fall on its own merits. Now, you guys will recall that when this application came in, I asked for the minutes of the Cheney meeting, because this reminded me very much of that application. The difficulty we had, I remember us having, having reviewed the minutes with the Cheney application was --
I'm sorry.
Was what he was presenting as hardship wasn't really tied to what he wanted to do. It was a setback issue, I think, in that application, and there was no link between the hardship he was claiming and what he wanted to do, in my view at the time. Now, so this has some features that are similar to that, because it's a mixed-use application in a similar area of town. But I agree, I mean, this application has to rise and fall on its own merits, and I can't --
Yeah, I agree with you.
It's not my job to make a decision about what is, what is good or what is bad zoning policy for the town. That's somebody, somebody smarter than me makes that decision. But what's different is, I think, is that, to me, is that Mr. DeWitt has, first of all, there are significant hardships on this property with the slopes and --
There's a lot of hardships.
It's a very large lot with very tiny sliver of it being developable, right? So, and it appears that we have evidence, and how sufficient it is is for the board to decide as a whole, of efforts to market the property as a commercial use, that just haven't --
Come to fruition.
Hasn't come to fruition for, because of the wetlands conditions and because of the slopes on the property.
But it's multi-use, right? You know, so you have commercial land, residential --
It's multi-use. That's what's, that's what's currently before us for being proposed, and this would have to go before the planning board anyway, for site plan review. And that's what it says in the ordinance, so. I'm conscious of the Cheney thing, but I agree, it's not, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, that application to this one. Also, no, no two applications are the same, anyway, but I just, I don't want to say what's spot zoning and what's not spot zoning, what's good zoning, what's bad zoning. It's not, it's a B1 zone as it stands today, and we have an application, you know, with some evidence.
Yeah, we're working on a B1 zone, period, but I was just giving you some, my thought of, of went down from many years ago.
You've said that a couple of developers have looked at it. Have you, have you got any marketing research that says that, you know, to the fact that, you know, this isn't viable as a strictly commercial unit? Or is it, I see the renderings and stuff, is there, is there a real estate professional that's come in with some strong recommendations? It doesn't have to be strong.
Yeah, I mean, I have marketed this through a real estate professional, which is where the first proposal came in. After having some time with it, he sort of walked away. I think that if he could have made money, he certainly would have.
I understand our concern, it's because we're concerned about setting up a slippery slope. But if the mixed, if the zoning has been changed to allow mixed-use nearby, I don't know what the current, that's why I asked if we have, if we have a current zoning map at hand.
I can grab one, it's still --
If you can just grab it, I think that'd be helpful for me to look at, because I didn't, I didn't appreciate that the zoning in this area had changed between the day to the Cheney application.
The zoning, the zoning from, to the railroad tracks is M2. They created M2A, which went for the town company, and the next three lots to the road that went up to the, the buildings up there where the doctor is, the doctor park is.
Right.
And they left the rest B1. On the edge of his zone, we're R2. So he's stuck between a rock and a hard place. He's right on the B1 zone on one side and the R2 on the other.
I'm sure it changed, I just wanted to understand the context of that.
Cheney did get an approval for that project he wanted. Walp did get an approval for that, planning board approval. So he didn't have to come for a variance.
So, he, he didn't have to come for a variance, they changed.
After they changed the zoning, he came, he went straight to the planning board.
Went straight to the planning board. Got a, got an approval.
Well, that was our recommendation, is that he pursue the legislative aspect and get the zone changed. So, I'm sure that's.
They did.
Did a lot of glad handing.
I don't know about that, but I know it was changed and, and he got an approval to build buildings.
It, it made sense.
Basically what he came to us with.
Yeah, he, he convinced the legislative authority that his, that his change made sense and he got the change. So, that's, it is what it is. I just wanna understand the context of the current zone, the overall aspect of the current zoning in this area currently, because.
This is a tough one to read, but that's what they gave us.
Let's all take a look at this, so. Where are we, Mike? Get us oriented.
Right, so, right, exactly, the railroad tracks are coming down this way and we're right in this area here.
The red or the pink here?
The pink, yeah, the pink is the B-one. And of course.
Yeah.
So, this is new road looping around and one oh eight going straight up.
Just from my information, that's the Great Bay family practice over there, is that correct?
Hard to tell.
But this is the parcel that was, that was pulled out for the Cheney work.
Right, this little sliver?
Yeah. To the railroad track.
Okay. Well, it's an unusual looking map. And he is in the B-one zone.
Correct.
On the, kind of on the borderline between the R-two and the B-one.
Right, he's right in this area.
Right.
And this is one oh eight down here, right?
Correct. Splits the two zones, right, the zone's kinda.
We'll follow along there.
Is it, is it right there, is that it, or is it this one? Oh, no, that's going into, that's going into Bear, Black Bear Park, right?
No.
No?
No, that's too, no, you're not down there yet.
No, I'm not far.
It's difficult to tell.
It is, this is. But as you can see, it is a very irregular shaped zone.
Yeah.
Where we do bump into.
I just wanna understand for the context of. What we're, what we have under consideration.
Our apologies for the.
Sorry for the sidebar, and you're free to look at this if you, if you feel like. So, this is the funeral home?
Yes. Does expand on the mixed-use commercial core, which is not, and there is a lot of residential in this area.
There is.
Well, no, it's, it's off Benway, it's the.
Right.
So, it's, it's behind the Irving.
Correct, yeah.
Right. There's not, well.
There's not direct abouters, no.
Who's that? Who's, who's not direct abouters?
With the residential.
To all the residential. Well, there's residential over here, but that's the right zone.
Yep.
Are there any other questions for the applicant or anything else? Any other points anybody wants to bring up? There's a lot to think about here.
Actually, one abouters residential, the Harkel roads.
The Harkel roads?
Yeah, they're diagonally across.
Should be in this area.
Yeah, they're across from the lot, but they're well, well away from the current structures.
Yeah. Just a technical abouter.
Anything else, Richie, you wanna?
Well, I, I can tell you what I think, but I'm not making any motions.
Sure, tell, tell us what you think.
I'll go right down through. We're going through the, uh, granted, the variance will not threaten the public health, safety or welfare. The vision statement of the Newmarket master plan supports quality, thoughtful development that preserves our natural resources, enhances the aesthetics of Newmarket, while creating a long-term tax base, which it does. There would be no general public purpose to gain by not granting the variance, as any loss to the individual is an injustice. It's a matter of fact that these properties located eighty-one Exeter Road, consisting of two houses, two sheds and one garage in their various states of disrepair, result in a diminished value to surrounding properties by granting the variance when future improvements will enhance the value of surrounding properties. And the hardship, considering the unique setting of the property and its environment of five point twenty-nine acres with two houses, one garage and two sheds, locate, locate on the east side of Exeter Road in a B-one zone, bordering residential use to the south in the R-two zone, has placed an unnecessary burden to develop this property in an orderly manner. The fact remains that this property has always maintained a residential use. The purpose of the zone is to bring in business use and the safety features of the site will be enhanced, all are unique to this property. The applicant has demonstrated throughout the criterion that without his request for mixed-use development, future development will not be viable. As this mixed-use development with commercial space and limited set of studio-style apartments will benefit both of the applicant and the development of the property in the town of Newmarket to promote orderly development and protect the health, safety and general welfare of the population and will enhance the tax base, granting the variance, a reasonable use of the property will be allowed. Now, I think that's, that's my thought, maybe everybody else should read theirs or, or give theirs.
I, I, I agree with the bulk of what you said. The only thing is, it flies in the face of the purpose of the ordinance. Now, as the adjudicative body, is it, is it our place to say the ordinance as written is wrong and?
That's why they're here.
No, it's not, it's not to say whether the ordinance is wrong.
I'm not saying the ordinance is wrong.
It's for us to say whether he's presented sufficient evidence to give him a variance from the ordinance, because enforcement of the ordinance, strictly according to the language of the ordinance, would be an unreasonable hardship. I think that, in the hardship criteria, it's typically what we focus on.
Yeah, exactly.
So, I think the question for us is whether the applicant has sufficient, has presented sufficient evidence that we are persuaded that the strict enforcement of the ordinance will be an unreasonable hardship. In other words, that he's, that, that there's some reasonable opportunity for strictly commercial development.
Would it be appropriate to postpone a decision on this for a week or so to get the rest of the information so we can look at the whole packet together? Is that something you'd entertain?
What else?
Well, all of those, the back.
Correspondence.
Yeah, the back correspondence and stuff. Right now, to, to be quite honest, all we've got is claims that some people looked at and said it can't be developed.
Yeah, and we've had applicants before who have made claims.
Correct.
That we've not found convincing or persuasive.
But I'm sure, you know, if, if we look at the whole package, I'm sure we'll just reinforce the fact that, that it's a legitimate claim and, and probably proceed. I'm a little reluctant right now just to say yes.
Well, are you reluctant to say no then?
I'm reluctant to say no, because I think it's a good idea.
What more, what more are you looking for?
I'm not sure.
They told you the size of the building.
Yeah.
If we approve it, it goes, if we approve it, it goes to the planning board. If we disapprove it, he walks away.
But we could have a guy here that's just saying, well, you know, I just wanna sell it, I, you know, I really don't have it. This is my good idea and it.
That's not for us to say, it's, we approve this project, we don't approve it.
That's what I'm saying, is if he's got the, if he's got the paperwork to substantiate the claims, then I think we could move forward, but I just haven't seen it.
I think, I think, I think the attorney wrote a pretty good resume of the five criteria, five criterions. I mean, it's all there, if, if, if you read all through it, which I've read a number of times.
Yes, I have too.
And I, I say, what more, what more do we have to look for?
I think, I think what Bob's considering.
I mean, we're not building the building. We're not setting the spots where it's gonna be. That, that goes to the planning board if we approve it.
We're not telling him how many units and everything that he's building and everything.
No, he says he wants eight.
I'm, it's the skeptic in me that's coming up, that it's easy to make claims and, and we're, we're a body that's based on evidence.
You can, you can either pass it or deny it. If you pass it, you can pass it whatever conditions you like to put on it. There's conditions.
But once it's passed, it's passed.
The number of units would be regulated by the dimensional table as well, from the residential density.
There's, yeah, there's an outside limit to how many units you can have.
He's added.
And he's added.
He had eight.
Is that it for the total parcel?
Right, because the acreage five.
Or the five point oh two, or whatever it is.
There's two units per acre, you have to subtract one, which is mixed use.
Sure.
So, he's at nine.
I have a quick question regarding the parking, could you bring up the, the rendering real quick? So, in that parking, in that parking lot, i- is there designated residential versus what would be used for the commercial?
Yeah, there will be, I mean, the residents will park in the back.
I'm sorry, say again.
Site plan question.
Uh, yeah, there would be, there would be.
So, do we not worry about that right now? Oh, okay.
Yeah, the parking is basically a site plan issue, site plan review issue.
Nope, my fault.
I mean, it's, it's interesting to know.
Yeah, I was just curious, yeah.
I think the big question is, is what you said, this little pretty slope, I think that's probably the.
That's, that's what I hear Bob saying, is, is.
Without hard evidence in hand, everybody could just come in and claim, well, you know, I've had it on the market for three years and it hasn't moved. We've got no evidence to that effect. And that's what we're basing our decision on, is evidence.
Can I just offer something that might help?
Go ahead, please, educate.
There was a commercial, and, and I'm not sure who the commercial realtor was that was involved.
Masiallo.
Masiallo. To get the documenta, the documentation that you're seeing tonight on the slides, which we thought we had, had submitted, is the best and most easily available. We could certainly go back and try to go and see if we can find someone from Masiallo or find someone from the third developer. But I think that you've heard the applicant's testimony in front of a board. And those two documents, the Appledore plan is so-called, and the email, which was from earlier. And the Appledore plan, excuse me, it's dated, when can we pull on the date?
Uh, it's two thousand and seven.
That's a two thousand and seven plan, and the email that you saw is of March, I think, or May of this year. It says Friday, May, if you scroll down to the second one, you can see it's this year. So, I'm not sure if that helps at all.
It does definitely help.
But I wanted to point out that, you know, he's obviously making a representation. I'm making the representation that he's provided me with this information. And those are two of the three items. And then, a verbal representation that Masiallo was engaged.
Go ahead, Wayne, go ahead.
Obviously, on that other slide, the, the Appledore slide, they're crossing that stream. Why do you feel that that, you don't wanna pursue that?
To develop the whole property like that would be extremely costly. The restrictions on wetland crossings seem to get tougher every year. You would have to put a live bottom, you know, called type and a ton of fill and retaining walls. And I just don't really wanna get involved with that. Right now, the plan is just to leave it open.
All right. And, and my other question, which probably doesn't, I don't know, I guess I should ask. I assume you want the residential for the cash flow?
Yes. And I'm.
That's why you look.
Partially, the other, the other part, what I do now in the little house is, I like to have somebody living on property who communicates with me and can do repairs. So, the plan would be to reserve one unit for somebody who would live there, take care of the property, mow the lawn, kind of be a on-site liaison. And as of now, the other, I plan on reserving one unit for myself.
I guess the slippery slope concern comes down to any other applicant who comes in with a different parcel, a different proposal to put a mixed use in the B-one zone, is still gonna have to satisfy us that they have some unique condition on their property that causes a hardship. This, what kind of mitigates the concerns I have, that Bob is suggesting and the slippery slope concern that I have, is this is really a very, very difficult lot. But I, now, there's other lots in that area that are impinged by wetlands, that would, that would make it difficult, I guess. But this one seems to me to have a particular aura of hardship to it.
The other ones are almost all developed, I mean.
And they're already developed.
The only one that's got any land left out there might be, Mike Pelzard at the funeral home.
Right.
Yeah, but he's utilized it all.
Pretty close.
Well, and there's, there's a lot on the other side of the, of the drugstore that's, I don't think is, it's impinged by the railroad tracks in the back more than it is by wetlands, to my knowledge, looking at it.
Correct.
So, I.
Because that's been filled almost all the way to the tracks.
This, this may be a truly unique, and the, and the Cheney parcel was not.
No.
Nothing like this. You know, that, they had slopes in the back, but that had nothing to do, in my mind, with the variance that they were requesting.
That lot, that lot behind Ride Aid, it had a lot of fill hole in there where Ride Aid is now. And then they filled a big area back there and they pushed a swamp almost back to the railroad track.
Correct.
Because that was all flooded there for years. And evidently, when that was put in, I guess there was no problem with filling it.
I remember when that was a broken-down car dealership.
Yeah.
In those Buddy Priest place.
I remember that.
And DeWitt remembers that.
He did have that beautiful Charger with the wing, the gold Charger with the wing.
Don't get too far off track.
That was a nice car.
But I don't know what the size of a, a lot on a B-one zone is you can build on. But that one lot next to Ride Aid, is, is it grandfathered?
Yeah.
It's kind of small.
It's a decent, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be a vested lot. It's a vested lot.
It's a vested lot?
Yeah.
Because I, I don't think it would meet the minimum zoning today if it wasn't.
Does that make sense, Bob, what I said?
Yes, it does to me. I'm just, again, looking by extension, what doing this would do to us, do to the, the validity of the overall zone.
Since you brought that up, the minimum lot size in a B-one is a half an acre, so, and this one is over five acres.
This one, yeah, but the one there on the other side of Ride Aid is, is a little one.
Right, it might, it's, it's under an acre, I'm confident, I don't know what its real size is.
They'll be in to see us for a variance for size of lot, sure.
Well, it's vested right now, so, they'll be good.
But, I think, yeah, Chris is right, it's, everybody has to provide some evidence of, of hardship, you know, going forward. You know, it's not like it's a cookie cutter, everybody's the same. Just because, just because if we were to approve this, it doesn't necessarily set a precedent, because there still has to be evidence in all of our criteria from all of the applicants that would come in.
I'm just not thinking about that area and what I know about that area from having seen it hundreds and thousands of times. I think this lot is unique, I really do.
Definitely, no doubt about it. You know, I guess what I'd like to see also at some point is the town council take up that whole B-one.
Try and rationalize the whole.
Yeah, try and rationalize the whole thing, because, I mean, it's, right now, it's just a mishmash of residential and they're trying to shoehorn some businesses in there instead of doing. and they're trying to shoehorn some businesses in there instead of doing a more rational approach with a, you know, you could put restrictions saying that, you know, business is on the first floor and.
I mean, that's a question for another day. It's a.
That's a council question.
It's a, it's a planning board question, but it's a.
That goes to council.
It's a, I think, I think what they're trying to do is accommodate the existing mix of uses that are already there and try to make some sense out of it. It's way beyond our jurisdiction or certainly beyond my mental brain power to figure out, so. So we're back to the application and the merits of this application. And what are we comfortable doing? What are we comfortable moving ahead with, if anything, tonight? Or do you want to, do you want to continue the hearing?
Well, I just don't think that any other evidence is going to change anybody's mind, either one way or another. So I guess I'd rather see a vote.
Will you put what you read to us in the form of a motion?
Yeah.
I will second that.
Do you want to vote on it, or the whole, the whole, the whole?
I think we want to have a vote that encompasses all five criteria?
A single vote on each one or one vote for all five?
That's still pending in legislation, isn't it? They haven't changed that yet, have they?
I believe that's the case. I don't think it's changed yet.
To still vote on one.
You can have one vote to encompass all five criteria.
I believe that's the case. I haven't looked at it.
They were supposed to change it where you could group them together and have one vote on the whole proposal.
We typically vote on the whole proposal. We typically vote on the whole proposal.
Yeah.
There are two variances being requested.
Yes.
Do we need to address each variance in a separate vote? Can we address both variances in a single vote? Mr. McDonald?
It's my belief that you can simply address that both of those variance requests are being addressed in a single rationale and then with a single vote.
We can, we can dress both proposals under the 32-49B one, B vote.
Correct.
Is that correct? I believe so.
I would think so.
I want to make sure that what we give you is legally sufficient for your purposes. So I want you to listen carefully.
Yeah.
When we frame up the motion.
I will listen carefully.
I'm not as sure.
If you want to exercise an abundance of caution and do them separately, we're certainly happy to listen to both of them.
I think the verbiage would be the same for both.
You want to vote on each one separately? Or read all five and make one vote?
He's talking about the criteria.
Yeah.
On the criteria.
I would do that, yeah.
One vote on all five criteria.
For both variances.
For both.
You want me to read them all over again?
Can I see, if you'll allow me, I'll see if I can frame it up.
Yeah.
And I'll just read, incorporate this.
It is two pages.
Okay.
I got some notes on the bottom in the second one, but that.
Okay, I won't. I'll make a couple of amendments to it as I go, but it'll be the substance of it. So what I'm going to propose is a motion to approve the application for a variance from section 32-49 of the New Market Zoning Ordinance and a variance from section 32-233, paragraph B one of the New Market Zoning Ordinance to permit a mix of residential and non-residential uses on one lot based upon the following findings. Criterion one, granted the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. Granted the variance would not threaten public health, safety or welfare. Criterion two, if the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because the vision statement of the New Market Master Plan supports quality thoughtful development that preserves natural resources and enhances the aesthetics of New Market by creating a long-term tax base. Criterion three, granted the variance would do substantial justice because there would be no general public purpose to be gained by not granting the variance or by denying the variance, as any loss to the individual would be outweighed by any public purpose to be served by denying the variance. Criterion four, if the variance were granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished. The current properties, it appears that attempts are being made to maintain them, but they are in various states of disrepair, resulting in diminished value to surrounding properties. Criterion five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship owing to special conditions of the property significantly, specifically being a very significant impingement of wetlands and as well as steep slopes that render only a small fraction of the property developable and make, based upon evidence submitted by the applicant, a commercial only use of the property highly unlikely, if not, highly unlikely based on the evidence presented. Based on those factors that distinguish the property from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because considering the unique setting as I've described of the property and its environment of 5.29 acres with two houses, one garage and two sheds, located on the east side of Exeter Road in the B one zone, bordering residential uses to the south in the R two zone has placed an unnecessary burden to develop this property in an orderly manner, in strict conformance with the terms of the B one zone. The property has always been maintained as residential use. The purpose of the zone is to bring in business use, which is at least partially accomplished, but partially accomplished by the application. And safety features of the site will be enhanced, which is removing one of the two existing means of access. The applicant has demonstrated throughout the criterion, or through the criterion, that without this request for mixed use development, future development will not be viable, as I've already referred to. This is a mixed use development with a commercial space and a limited set of studio style apartments will benefit the applicant and the town of New Market to promote early development and protect the health, safety and general welfare of the population, as well as enhance the tax base. And by granting the variance, a reasonable use of the property will be allowed. Having met the five parts of the variance criteria for New Market's municipal code, being section 32-49 and 32-233, paragraph B one, the motion is made to demolish, the motion is made to approve the variances as requested. Sound?
Thank you.
I second you.
Second, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Richie, once again for all your hard work, as usual. And.
Thank you very much.
You don't have to go home, but you can stay here.
Thanks for being patient with me.
Thank you for being patient with us. Any new world business that come before the board at this time? It's nice to see you all, by the way.
Yeah, hello.
Since April.
Trying to give you a couple more, sorry.
Well, what I'm worried about is that there are people out there doing stuff who should be applying for variances, but they aren't. That's, we have these law on the laws. That's what I get worried about, and I'm sure you worry about it as well. So I encourage people, if you're building in a setback or doing anything on your property you have a question about, come down and see Mr. Hoffman and he'll talk you through it. And we're not nearly as bad as we look for sound.
It's important when it comes time to sell the property.
It's important when it comes time to sell the property.
Anybody would like to become a member?
Yeah. We're always on the lookout for new members. So any new world business come before us at this time? Seeing none, entertain the motion to adjourn. So moved. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.